Okay. Good weekend. Get started, everyone, please stand. I want to ask Commissioner Owens to lead us into the presentation and then we'll round the budget, please.
Let's pray. Gracious Lord and Savior, we just thank you tonight, Lord. We thank you for the blessings of our gathering here, and we thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon our county. Will we just ask for your discernment in our decisions? We pray, Lord, that you would guide our hands and our thoughts, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to be here today in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will call a meeting to the order of our regular Gates County Board of Commissioners, sorry, meeting in the month of March, from March 20th, 2017, at 7:00 Because this is the second meeting, there is no minutes to approve, a minute, agenda adjustments. There are two to be added to new business, number eight, school request, and number nine, condemnation request. So you will add that to your agenda. Number eight is school request, number nine condemnation request. Is there anything else?
Um, Jim, I make a motion that we approve the issues to the agenda. Second.
Okay, my motion's been made, and second. All those in favor of approving the agenda as adjusted, say aye or not. All opposed. And so the agenda is approved. Unites delegations, there are none, but we do have to, two unites delegations tonight. Always a pleasure to see Valerie Riddick to the Gates Partners for help, and she has given us a very extensive report, but look forward to hearing them. You can step up to the microphone. I thought you were leaving.
Good afternoon, how's everybody doing?
Good.
It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight to report on the fourth, first quarter for Gates Park, for Health Commissioners Report. You should have a copy of it, printed out, and then also attached with it is a schedule of our meeting events and activities. So I'm not going to read everything, but everything you tell, be ready over when you receive it off email. Gates Park for Health is very busy. We have a lot of things going on. The first item is our Abrahams Overdose Prevention Coalition, and we do meet at Abrahams Regional Health Services in Elizabeth City, and we talk about the things that deal with overdose prevention. And as you can see, they give details. We've installed a medication drop box here in the courthouse, where citizens can bring unused or expired medication and dispose of property in the medication drop box. The next one is our Cancer Support Group. We meet on the second Wednesday of each month at four o'clock at the Emergency Millstone. The committee's been very busy. Not only did we just meet and we have dinner, but we also have educational sessions, and you can see they're listed by our providers, such as Abrahams Regional Health Services, by the John Hospital, by the John Hospital, and so on. So these are speakers that come in and present to the group. And last year, the group actually went out to the nursing homes at Gates House, and we played bingo with the residents, and also we gave out board passes. We toured the Hope Lodge in Greenville. That's where the individuals who are being treated for cancer, that they need to stay over, they can get a room there at the Hope Lodge, so we got a tour of that and the body. And some of our citizens, they attended the Pink Power Luncheon that we had in October, and also the Hot Luncheon that we just had in February. The Diabetes Support Group meets on the second Wednesday of each month at 10:00 at the Community Center, and as you can see, Ashley Miller with Abrahams Regional Health Services is the health educator, and she has a calendar that she go over each month with different topics. Some of the topics is my clique bingo, that that's like a game that they play, choosing the right fruits and vegetables, holiday tips. So there's other topics that we cover for the 12 months of the diabetes. And also, Gates County has a program called Gates County Diabetes Program. It's available through funding from Oversea Healthcare Foundation, and the program is managed by our registered nurses, registered dietitians, certified diabetes educator. The classes are held at the Gates County Health Department on Fridays. So on every other Friday, Lynette Spade, she does the assessment. On the other two Fridays, she holds a class. Our Chronic Disease Prevention and Management Council, we meet on the second Wednesdays of each month at 2:00, and we focus on providing educational resources, healthy living, healthy foods, and how to deal with chronic illnesses. And also, some of the things that we involve in is the Pink Power Luncheon that we do in October. Let's Talk Diabetes in November, the Body and Heart Health in February. We also attend the Millstone Day in April instead of a booth. The Health Fairs around the county, as churches have health fairs within the organization, they can send an invitation, we will attend and set up. Our Holy Souls Walking Challenge is done through the faith base through the churches. And also, our Gates County Farmers Market is looking to hopefully open back up on June of this year. Our Healthy Foods Coalition, that's part of the pitch, which is partnerships to improve community health. We meet on the fourth Tuesday of each month in Edington, and this coalition focuses on providing access to healthy food choices to communities through both side stands, public markets, and local farmers markets. The Alzheimer's Support Group meets on the fourth Tuesday at 2:00, and Lynn Fraser with Abrahams Commission, she's a coordinator. And actually, their last meeting was this month, they had, no, last month, February. So they would no longer be meeting in Gates County going forward, so we're going to try to combine it with the Cancer Support Group. So we're in talks to go down to combine the two together, because most of the same people attend both support groups. And some of the other things, every other month, we have the Adult and Aging Task Force Committee, which meets on that second Friday at 9:00 at DSS, and we get updates from all the agencies, along with updates from Accordius Health and Rehab and Gates House. Behavior Health Committee meets the Ferry Wiz at each month, our Gates County Department of Social Services, and they address substance abuse and mental health services. The agencies also provide services, Trillion, RI International, Abrahams Commission, Area Agency, Gates County Schools, and Abrahams Regional Health Services. And then we have the, our Executive Board meeting listed, our Regular Board meeting meets every, every other month on the Wednesday. And then on the third, every other third month, we have Health Careling and Staff Meeting, and our Abrahams Regional Health Services Team Meeting, and then also the Pitch Coalition meets. And then every Friday, RI International is located at the Accordius Health and Rehab for Wellness Program from 10:30 to 11:00. Okay, your second page, again, so that's the schedule of our meetings and events and activities. So this is pretty much just a little synopsis of everything that goes on for the year. And I know we're just in the first half from July to January, but I went on a list of everything that's going to take us out through 2018. So as you see, our monthly meetings are listed, every other meeting, monthly meetings are every three months, and then every Friday. And then below is our special events. These are things that we are invited to or receive correspondence to be able to attend. A grant application for a valuable John Hospital benefit grant, I've just submitted my application for one today. Also, I submitted a letter of intent to Gates County Commissioners, with hope to be in your budget process for your approval. And that's about everything. As I said, we're kind of busy, we're looking for volunteers to come and join some of these committees. I'm glad to see, Mr. Fett, he attended the, Freeman, I'm sorry, Freeman was at the Abrahams Regional Health Services Board Meeting that I attended on last month, so I gave a presentation on the community health assessment. And right now, with that process, we're getting ready to do our community action plan, with preparing to take the three areas, which is access to care, chronic disease, and behavioral health. The three priorities that are listed for Gates County, and we're going to put that in the action plan that we'll do in 2016 to 2018. Okay, and then you have a copy of our pitch manual. This comes out formally, so this is our winner, winner issue, and it's a lot of good information, different speakers that we may have come from time to time to the surrounding counties, and we are involved in the participation. So are there any questions?
My second comment, but Ms. Riddick certainly gave a wonderful presentation to us over in Elizabeth City, that board meeting, Executive Board Meeting, and then the Full Board Meeting, so we appreciate it, very good.
It's certainly, I mean, from reading your report and hearing you talk to us, then you are quite a busy one.
Quite busy, for 40 hours a month, quite busy.
Absolutely.
I'll be thankful for all that you do to keep Gates County citizens healthy. That's what's part of us.
That's him.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And if there's any special topics that anybody wants to copy over this panel?
Thank you so much. Now, I believe we have a report from Mrs. Holly from DSS. She's going to report on the Community Child Protection Team Report.
Good evening, Lady Chair, Commissioner Owens, Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Felton, Commissioner Freeman, County Attorney, Clerk, Mrs. Parks. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to present this report on behalf of the Gates County Community Child Protection Team. Although I am the chair, I am still a member. There's a saying that it takes a village to raise a child, but tonight, I'm going to say, Father, it also takes a village to protect a child or children. I would like to point out in the annual report, you have copies, and I will try to stay on track. On page five, of course, there's the table of contents, and who has the authority to appoint certain individuals to the team on page three, but on page five, there's a list of the local Community Child Protection Team, Community Fatality Prevention Team members. And tonight, I will be, even though we are combined, I need to focus on CCPT, which are also CFPT members, because I understand that the CFPT, which Mrs. Karen Riddick chairs, also presents to the board. So I don't want to really overstep, so I'm trying to keep it as separate as possible. But on page five is a list of our membership. Of course, you see Mr. Edward Webb, our former Gates County Sheriff. He served in 2016, and this information is from 2016 and ongoing, so in the next report, you will see the new appointed Sheriff, Sheriff Randy Hathaway. Also, there was another change in membership, Mrs. Adrian Brandon retired from Gates County Schools, and Mrs. Tang Riddick-Boone is currently representing. She is the Assistant to the Superintendent, Superintendent Barry Williams. I also heard, and then I read, where Ms. Melody Jordan with Abrahams Hope Line will be retiring this year, but she already has, I won't say appointed, she ensures that there's representation from their agency in the person of Dr. Latonia Johnson, and she has been attending those meetings faithfully. On the same page, B, speaks to the frequency, place, date, and time. We meet four times a year, on the third Thursday of January, April, July, and October at noon. And I know some may say, well, noon is lunchtime, but I make sure we don't have an excuse that I need to stop for lunch, because it's provided. Also, you'll probably notice, maybe in next year's report, maybe a change with the meeting times. We are being requested by Gates County Emergency Management that there's a conflict with this schedule going forward, and we so desperately need Gates County Emergency Management at the table, because when you think about protection, we always think about rescue, being one of our very important first responders. Type a number of cases reviewed in 2016, and I just want to kind of applaud on that, that we had no child fatality referred to our team by the state of North Carolina to be reviewed last year. That is the news. And that would have been referred to us as a result of child abuse, child neglect, or possibly dependency. On page six, D, community factors that impact the well-being of families and children. And of course, I would not take it upon myself to remove any of this, because as I forestated, I am a team member, so I'm speaking on behalf of the team. Mental health. We continue residents continue having to travel outside of the county for mental health services. We are fortunate to be in the catchment area of Trillion Health Resources, formerly known as Eastern Atlanta Behavioral Health. Nonetheless, to utilize their services, you still have to travel outside of the county. It has been at least two years since we have had a mental health provider here in the county, and I believe that was Northeastern Counseling Services at Ellen's, is that Ellen's Cross Road?
Eastern.
Eastern's Cross Road, and her name was Kristen Cole. We are aware of mobile crisis, and we're so thankful to know that that exists. Of course, we have utilized it, and I've also heard presentations by them here in the county. Substance abuse, abusing opiates. We have had this discussion in 2016, and according to the statistics, of the four overdoses that occurred in this county, three of the individuals survived. Well, what does that have to do with child welfare? One, it could have been a child. Secondly, it could have been the parent or caretaker of a child, which could have warranted Gates County DSS intervention. We are also aware that Abrahams Regional Health Services received a grant in the amount of $70,000. And Ms. Riddick is here tonight, and she's familiar with those grant funds, but we've been informed that those grant funds are now exhausted. I also understand that those grant funds assisted, and we also have our sheriff here tonight, so please correct me. But I also understood that those grant funds assisted law enforcement agencies to hold medication, take back events, to provide permanent medication, take back boxes, and much more. And to also have those kids all on duty, to administer if needed, and saving a life. Again, suppose it was a minor child. Suppose it was a parent or caretaker of a child in this county. I'm quite sure our team would be having a discussion. First responders would be on duty, as well as the Department of Social Services, to assess the safety of any children that may be residing in that home. Why am I talking about the drug Norcan, Naloxone, that's supposed to reverse the effects of opiates? And those opiates include painkillers that may, that have back pain, headaches, any other type of ailment, may have access to. But when they are not used for the intended purpose, then it can result in suffering that we all don't want to deal with. Overdoses, children having access to those drugs. That's why we're so thankful for that grant, that gave an opportunity for the take-back events, where individuals could go and drop off their unused or expired medications. That's the way to prevent children from having access. Also, those events were educational opportunities, and I understand that there's a box installed at the sheriff's office, so we are so thankful to know that even though the funds are exhausted, there's still an avenue, a way that we can drop off unused expired medication. Even if we don't have it personally, we are still able to tell someone else to inform the community that there is a place that you can take medication. Well, going back to Norcan, and I was going to say this a little later on, but I might as well, how much time do I have?
Keep going.
Okay. Oh, Norcan, we need for it to be accessible. I heard that the local pharmacy does not have it, and then I thought about, I don't know how much power we have to make that happen, but I thought about, Sheriff, in the event, first responders are not thought about being called, but a family member or a friend, because there is a standing order, I believe, in place, where this prescription or this drug is supposed to be available. And it was signed, I believe, 20 last year by the governor, the standing order, but this what makes it a factor, an issue. If the local pharmacy does not have it at the time that somebody is overdosing, and the first responders are not recalled, but a family or a friend rather go and get it, will they be able to have access to it? I also know that the pharmacy does not carry it, but was informed that with a prescription, you're making havoc the next day. The next day could be too late. Hopefully, anyone in this county would not be apprehensive to contact law enforcement or emergency services that could have, I would say, the ant to go on hand. Moving on to domestic violence, it remains constant. Yes, sir.
Just before we move there, the pharmacy here in Gates County doesn't carry it, but we know where the nearest pharmacy, whether it's Hurford County, Passapendae, or South of Naperville County, or John, any of those pharmacies?
I have not researched it, because I was really concentrating on right here, because I know it would be, yes.
This pharmacy does not carry it and refuse to do so. They're probably hesitant, so they have to not carry, because there's pharmacies anywhere but Gates County. I believe, I know Passapendae Pharmacy says it. I'm not sure about Hurford County, but I'm sure that there is a hospital that they can get it through their pharmacy, so.
But we don't have access, in other words, it can, within a reasonable time, it could be gotten, of course.
We, we actually, now that, we, and I can get involved in Mrs. Holly, no, this, this project or this grant that we have, actually funded Project Lazarus as well, and you were here about this later on in my budget, that was giving doses units to first responders, such as law enforcement, EMS, firefighters, whoever. We can have one dosage unit in our day, my guys have been trained to administer that one dosage unit. It starts from the fact, immediate effect of the opiates, and we can at least administer one dosage unit in the way from rescue to response. And the 20-some other doses that we had last year, one is carried yesterday afternoon about 4:00, we were able to administer the Norcan, and immediately blocked the effects of the opiates, the overdose of opiates. We have one dosage unit, when that expires, we don't get a refund. I was talking to Commissioner Freeman about this already. We, we're done after this one dosage unit. We can't go to rescue and expect rescue to give us their dosage units. Project Lazarus has to actually sponsor this for a while. They have a supply book or little storehouse, and to make it long, to be short, once our dosage unit is gone, the law enforcement now, we either have to purchase it, or go to rescue and get theirs, which we have, they have to replenish theirs, where we're at, still with this.
Sure.
Yes.
How expensive, how expensive is it?
From my understanding, a dosage unit runs at 45, 50 bucks on the low end, but it's not only one dosage unit. All the overdoses that we had dealing with opiates, it was administered three times before there was an effect. So you're talking three doses, and so you're talking probably 100 and some dollars.
I'm sorry, quicker is the master, the better, chances.
Yes, ma'am, that is absolutely correct.
So that, when we're thinking about somewhere else, that cuts it down, I mean, cuts the time, I mean, it lengthens the time.
Well, no, if we, and if we respond right now, we don't have time to run to a hospital and get this opiate.
That's what I'm saying.
You have a minute, if they start breathing, we've got to places where they were taking a breath every, one every 30 seconds, so they're reading two or three times a minute. I said, the third effect is normally like you and I sitting here right now talking, is completely blocks the nerve senses of the opiates and blocks the opiates out, and they were 300, 180 degrees Fahrenheit.
And you said there were 20 overdoses.
We had, yes, we had 23. We got a map in EOC where we have actually kept up with this, because the train is setting in. You hear more of it later, you can hear it all you want now, but I'm definitely going to hear it later on my budget, because we're going to be some doses units in my patrol car for my guys to respond.
And just to add to that, too, Sheriff, is that we had one deputy that has brought three back.
Yeah, alone, and he has three branches of, I mean, he's Norcan, but thank God for Stormy Bus, the chief of the rescue squad, because he was likely to get the doctor that he does, and he used all three.
So it responds to Commissioner Jordan, too, we do have it in the rescue squad, and some, I know I still have one unit in my patrol car, but most of the time, the individual, the victim, in this case, is actually, it's about they are dead by the time the deputy gets there, the nurses are first.
But it's amazing, the people are versatile this morning, it's amazing how you can see. They get there, they're breathing three times a minute, you get them first doses, which is, and it's, we just shoot up each nostril, bad, and it starts to come around the second minute, they almost sit in the third minute, they sit, they say, where's my, where are you? It's amazing how this could work, but it only works for opiates.
You thought, it, it sounds like if you approved it in the budget, maybe you ever talked to the pharmacy and they'll.
I spoke to Talat, I spoke to Brad up here at the pharmacy, and Brad said, his people said, no, they're not going to carry it, they knew, they had more knowledge, or just the knowledge as we are, of what they, we needed for it. So they said, no, maybe you guys as commissioners may step up and say, hey, speak to the owners of Talat. We. We got a demand here that's plus tickets, data. And again, we responded with my deputy, the same one that's usually three times, responded again yesterday to one about four o'clock yesterday evening in the gates area. So it's daily appearance now, or at least two or three times a week.
And if I may also add, and when Sheriff, and we're speaking of twenty overdoses as compared to what your figures are.
That was reported. It was, you know, I mean, it's not.
Yes.
And four overdoses, it's not that there's a challenge to your report. It's just that, and we have reviewed this at Al-Wal Ridwa, Ms. Riddick and I attended board meetings, is that because of the obesity and going across the gender line, some of these overdose deaths are not reported. We actually had nine in Gates County that were just reported in here, but in actuality, Allison, we had several deaths. Much more than that to report.
And there again, suppose it was a child, someone under the age of eighteen. And I also want to go back to that standing order. Suppose a rescue, a first responder is not called, but a family member or a friend knows because of the standing order, I should be able to go to the pharmacy and get this to help save. I do understand stigma, but you just have to know what somebody decided to do in the last minute, and it would not even be a little. Because we're talking about time.
And it's sold over the counter, it's not prescribed?
No.
So if the pharmacy had it, going to pharmacy.
It is a prescribed drug. It's a standing order for the state.
You could go to, what are you, right now, purchase this, this morning?
That you're not prosecuted for going to get it to save a life. It's tied to the Good Samaritan law.
Commissioner, they're really trying to speak to her. There are family members, and then I dare not call names, but there are family members who actually have it on hand for children of their people who know are using opiates. And they keep it on hand, they've gone out, the county of course, to purchase it. And this was an interview we conducted, I don't know if the lieutenant, Commissioner Freeman was there, but this is an interview we conducted and knew that this girl mom had, knocks really in her house in case her daughter would be, of course, heroin, so, opioid choice, but that's what we're doing. So you can get it and it's readily accessible, we just don't have it in Gates County, but that's the understanding pharmacy will have.
And it's, I'm quite sure I can speak on behalf of the team, that it's our hope that we never have to give statistics that we lost a child due to not being able to have this available. Domestic violence on page seven continues to be part of the caseload. A child can have knowledge that his or her caretakers are engaging in physical alterations, altercations. Children can be injured during domestic violence when they try to intervene to stop the altercation. It's also been shared that children are affected maybe later on in life psychologically for having witnessed costum or continuous altercations between their caretakers. Therefore, in October, many of us do not have a problem wearing the color purple, wearing a purple ribbon that sends out a message that there's no place for domestic violence in our homes, neighborhoods, workplaces, or schools. In this report, I have included pictures that are in color. I don't have access to a color print. I'm not gonna ask for one this budget year. But we would look a little bit more presentable. And you could tell if it was a purple ribbon. Or also in October, uh, by October, yeah, I do, I was proud of that. This photo here was taken during the disaster food sale application process as a result of Hurricane Matthew. And our staff being so passionate about what the team does did not hesitate to take a picture that could be shared in our annual report. National Child Abuse Prevention Month sends out more photos. Let me see where it's at. That's the small one. April twenty sixteen, you see some of our team members holding the pinwheels. Pinwheels for Prevention. In two thousand and eight, Prevent Child Abuse America introduced the pinwheel as the new national symbol for child abuse prevention through pinwheels for prevention. Pinwheels represent the bright pictures all children deserve and are used to start conversations and educate communities about the importance of supporting children and families. Also, that should be an article, and I want you to have proof that I did get in contact with the editor, Mr. Cal Bryant, and he was so kind to feature an article in the index on behalf of the Gates County CCPD, CFPT. Human trafficking. Sometimes you think things happen far off, but I believe it's closer than you think. I've heard Commissioner Freeman mention highway, is it ninety-five? Route ninety-five, so much traffic, and you don't know who's in those trucks and those vehicles going from north to south, from New York and Manhattan in between. Human trafficking is a form of modern slavery that occurs in every state, including North Carolina. Traffickers use force, fraud, or coercion to control victims for the purpose of engaging in commercial sex acts or labor services against an individual's will. The National Human Trafficking Resource Center works closely with service providers, law enforcement, and other professionals in North Carolina to serve victims and survivors of trafficking, respond to human trafficking cases, and share information and resources. The Gates County CCPD participated in a webinar October twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, sponsored by the North Carolina Division of Social Services in partnership with the Jordan Institute for Families and the UNC Chapel Hill of Social Work. The title of the webinar was Human Trafficking, What Child Welfare Agencies Should Know. The Gates County CCPD members that participated received certificates. Page eight, Commitment to Take Back Day, as I forestated, that we were thankful for that. Also, Take Back Day was part of the Gates County Annual Fund and Fitness Day on October first, twenty sixteen, and Gates County CCPD was represented. Diverse cultures is something else that we discussed last year. When I attended and some of the other members attended the twenty sixteen Gates County Community Health Assessment or the Gates County unveiling at the Richards Mill Pond Center, it was stated in the presentation in the PowerPoint, which I later received a hard copy, that compared to the age distribution of the total Gates County population, the Latina population in the county has higher proportions of persons ages birth to nine years and those aged thirty to thirty-four. Males represent forty-eight percent of the Latina population. Well, when we asked, how does that relate to child welfare? It was also brought to the team's attention that we have Latina or even Hispanic, however you want to reference. The culture goes to the health department. Children are also enrolled in the school system, I believe, that are limited English speaking. And I believe that it's called the ESL program. Well, how does that relate to child welfare, well-being of children? Tonight, any of us that are first responders, including DSS, could respond to a home to find individuals, parents, and children in a crisis mode, and nobody in that home can really tell you what's going on. Another thing is, even if we had to respond, and there was one or someone in that household that could speak some English, could communicate with another English-speaking individual, how credible would that information be when it comes to child safety? Of course, we had some discussion last year about that, and the DA's office was naming someone that they collaborate with for interpretation. Well, that could be another question. Why does someone come to the Department of Social Services? Limited English speaking. I want to tell you what we have in place. We use online translation services, which is simply Google. You can key in your response in English and it comes and translates for us. But when you're in a crisis mode, do you have that capability? Sheriff knew here, matter of fact, it was Sheriff Webb that shared with us that he knew someone, and of course, we tried to have a parent representative, but that didn't pan out. And I do want to say to, I want to share this, this is a good point for me to, a good place for me to share. We tried to reach out so that we can have someone to have dialogue with, so that we can understand the culture in the event that we have to respond in a crisis. And we were unsuccessful in twenty sixteen. I collaborated with Gates County Schools with Mrs. Riddick Boone, the assistant to the superintendent. And she tried to identify a parent. But for some reason, the parent was very reserved and did not go in the front. How about a stepfather? Cinco de Mayo? Yeah, had never even been to an event. But the school system had an event at the Community Center last year. And I stayed over and said, well, this is gonna be a good opportunity for me to try to reach out to maybe Hispanic, Latina, parent so that we can have some connection in the event that we're ever in a crisis, someone to serve on the team that could help us with identifying maybe gaps or services in the service delivery area. Well, I went and the fanfare was beautiful. There was food, there was music, and I looked around the room and Ms. Boone told me, nobody show up. Not for an event that is even held for your culture. That says something. Well, I asked her, I said, why? All of a sudden, everybody had to work there. Well, so I said, well, what does that have to do with protection? As I forestated, a voice, it's another culture. We cannot pick and choose who we're going to serve. If a child is in crisis, parent is in crisis. And speaking of a parent in crisis, I also noted in the report, one of the team members was saying that she had to try to assist a parent that didn't speak English and how much that was a challenge for her. So regarding child welfare, we just think about, we just never know when first responders or Department of Social Services have to respond. So we was trying to find someone that would serve on the team, and we were not successful in twenty sixteen. We may be successful in twenty seventeen and we may not. Also on page eight, and I'm almost done, under next to E, child statistics for Gates County. For fiscal year twenty fifteen sixteen, we had eighty-seven CPS Child Protective Services reports, and fifty-four of them warranted an investigation. It either met the definition of child abuse or child neglect or dependency. This is only one shy, I believe, of the previous year. I checked the stats before I came over this evening, and I believe that we are at thirty-five reports already. So recommendation for the Board of County Commissioners, and this is not Ann Hollis's request, this is the team's recommendation. Page eight A, to continue to approve sufficient funding for the Department of Social Services to enable the provision of quality child protective services and supportive services for families. Programs such as Work First Family Assistance, Medicaid, and F and X. They did not tell me to remove this, which was stated in our prior year. Fund a fully trained, dedicated law enforcement officer to assist DSS platters with expertise in child and ill abuse, neglect, and exploitation. Provide additional safe recreational opportunities for youth to divert them from dangerous activities that they engage in for lack of other options. And when I think about that, when I think about in the summer, when it is so hot, where do children, youth, go to swim? Support the CCPD, CFPT's exploration of funding options for community awareness and education and provide a local match if required. The recruitment and retention of a local mental health substance abuse provider within Gates County that would be able to provide services and to address gaps in services for county residents identified throughout the year. On page nine, under four, other information related to child protection specific to the county. We also have CCPD, CFPT members who also serve on the Gates County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, DCPC, and the Gates County Child Protective Collaborative. As Ms. Riddick said, she mentioned something about speakers coming to Gates Harbor. We also had speakers to come in twenty sixteen. We had Ms. Kate Ross, she's a family advocate and prevention specialist from Kids First, Inc. We also had Mr. Trey Wright. He is a program lead coordinator for Triple P Positive Parenting. And on page ten, parent representative. A parent of a child who died before reaching the child's eighteenth birthday may be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. The Gates County Child Protective Prevention Team members identified an adult in this category and has solicited participation. However, no final decision was made by December thirty-first, twenty sixteen. The same adult could serve on both Gates County CCPD and CFPT. And before I have my seat, supervisor Phyllis Parker, our social work supervisor, who supervises both adult protective services and child protective services. She was so kind to write out something for me to share, and I'll be closing with this. We are living in a technology era. We are living in a technology era, and this is in regards to the NCFAST system. Some of you may have heard of NCFAST. It's a different way. Let me read what she has, and I won't confuse anyone. For a few years now, many of you have been constantly bombarded by myself and past DSS directors with the term NCFAST. Some of you may ask, what is NCFAST? Well, if you ask Mr. Warren Curry, the county IT and eligibility staff, NCFAST has somewhat been a mandated nightmare. And I still want to keep my job, so I, that's. However, for those of you who are not familiar with the term, NCFAST stands for Non-Grown Honor Families Assessing Services through Technology. For programs such as food and nutrition, NCFAST was implemented in 2012 or 2013. The goal of the project is to improve how all local counties' social services provide benefits and services to its citizens. The ultimate goal of the project is to implement all DSS programs. For 2017, the state is looking to add new programs such as crisis intervention, daycare, low-income energy assistance program, ABS and CPS. Unlike DSS eligibility programs that will remain in-house, the services program will have a different look, a sort of reconstruction on their approach. You might ask, what would this look like? The state is mandated in every county, supply tablets and data, as that all evaluations will now be required be completed in the homes of the clients. For the investigative or case management, social workers would need to be able to log on and conduct business in the home or wherever the clients are found. This will provide a formalized statewide practice framework between counties. In fact, social workers will be afforded the opportunity to do a statewide background check on the families, whether they are receiving services from another county, have a history with adult and child protective services within another county, and/or currently on, she said, on the run, when I said fleeing. Until the development of this technology, social workers that are probably would not obtain this information until weeks after being involved with the families. So now, instead of requesting client records from other counties, they will now be able to access them at the time of contact. Just to be clear, a couple of tablets in the agency will not be feasible, as the Gates County DSS conflict staff finds social workers, one case manager, that would need to utilize this technology. So the idea of taking turns is not realistic. Adult protective services and child welfare both have timeframes. At any given time, all staff would be required to be in the field. Because the use of tablets is nothing new to many of our metropolitan counties, the state has a number of pilot counties in the process of utilizing NCFAST in their services programs. Again, this is not something new to the ears of many of you that have been following the initiative. It is something that is now on our doorstep and requiring funding. I thought that that was a good time to share that with commissioners in this setting, because we don't know when we will be coming for, asking for funds in the budget. It's not today, it's not this year, maybe not this year, but it's likely in the near future that will be a request. Questions?
The question, the problem with that is, you're not going to have internet service in a lot of the areas of the county. And we're working on broadband, but it's not here.
Yes.
So, if, and that's in rural North Carolina, that's not just Gates County. So the state would have to take that into consideration.
Questions?
Um, I have a question. I was, um, if I look back here, um, when you were talking about the Latino population, what is the current population in Gates County?
I don't have those stats. It may be in the unveiling, that assessment that was completed in 2016, would you agree?
Um, the total is about eleven-nine-of-seven in Gates County via the census report, the total population of the Gates County.
She meant Latino.
Just Latino.
Yeah, I know the total population. It was just counting surprising the number of, you know, the high percentage.
Yes, and those stats came from that 2016 health assessment I put from that.
I have a request, that's not a question, but it's a request for the Child Protective Services Committee.
Yes.
Will, I'd like to see you all draft up some type of means of how the county can get trillium to provide mental health services in the county again. However, how do you think, what kind of strategy do you all feel that we as the Board of Commissioners can use? Who do we need to contact? And just, you know, give us some assistance in that, and maybe we can apply the pressure, if you will, on trying to get them to establish and provide in the county. But certainly, we would need know who to contact, and maybe identify how it's going to be funded, you know, maybe correspond with them a little bit. But that's something if you would provide to us, we could probably try to make a happen.
Okay, well, we are scheduled to meet next month, and I would most definitely share that request with the team. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, of course, no administrative reports on our second meeting, and there's noted a couple of hearings, so we're back to old business. First item is a resolution authorizing sealed bids for sale of property. Kay Manor, would you like to give some highlights? We have it in our, well, into a place.
In order to sell the property that is in question, you do have to pass the resolution that is before you tonight. The resolution, if you know, does reference the parcel, as well as not only parcel number, but the acreage. It also sets the minimum accepted bid, and it does give a due date. After the due date, there will be an opening of bids that are then public, and then on May third, that's when all the bids will be reported to the commissioners, and the commissioners will return to the highest responsible bidder and award the bid at the May third commissioners meeting. There is a five percent deposit required for the bid, and then if you are not the highest bidder, that five percent will be returned. It's the same process that was followed for the property that we sold last year, as well.
Wise pleasure, group.
Just before we go into making a motion to move forward, I think to make it more appealing, where we say the, it's a half acre. I think our current zoning requirement is an acre without structure for the used to everybody to build on.
Correct, but this is a log record.
It's a log record.
It's a grandfathered.
All right, well, I would like to see, put it here, it's Zone R1. I looked that up, I mean, R1.
Right.
So it's currently zoned where you could put an house on there, since it is already on record, a log record. So, what I would like, you know, in our motion to consider adding, currently zoned R1, we could probably put it in the first paragraph, where it says, known as parcels, zero-one-zero-six-seven-two, currently zoned R1.
And then, and then reference in the book, so it's up.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And in that third paragraph, fourth paragraph, that's one thirty-two, that should be one thirteen, one one. Under number one.
Number nine there?
Yeah, the last, on the end.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I don't think a motion that we authorize the resolution that present the force with the current addition in the first edition of the property, the addition of currently zoned R1, based on the landing records.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Is there any further discussion?
Just one thing is in the description, Bazemore Lane. Bazemore Lane, that's not quite spelled.
Yes, B-Z-E, that's right.
That's not what it is.
B-Z-E-More.
I see, sometimes when you go to work with D's, you, it's sometimes spelling's not
Re-publish and re.
That's the way it is, that's the way it's reported on the D.
It is, as it is. That's what's on the D's, you know. But that's so confusing, you know, I guess, because everybody knows that it's Bazemore Road Lane, and when I'm wearing the word Bazemore, yeah, we search for the.
Put AKA Bazemore.
Yeah, whether you think it's Bazemore, Bazemore, we need to add that. I might, I might notice because I just happen to know where, know what we're talking about, but someone else sees that, isn't that, put it where it is.
Okay, so we have two, just two adjustments to the one we have in front of us, AKA Bazemore Lane, and add the zone R1. And you've.
And all.
Current.
A current zone. Okay, any further discussion? Page nine, all votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Pass, unanimous. You can thwart advertising. Okay, next item on the agenda is the historic courthouse funding letter that we have seen here.
Madam Chairman, I, I have looked it over, and I think it's something we should send out, you know, send a copy to North Vale, North Vale, and publish it in the, Cal and the Gates County, and send it to possibly some county citizens that may be interested in, we think may be interested in providing donations for restoration of old courthouse.
Any other comments?
Yes, ma'am, I respectfully disagree. I don't think this should be sent out to taxpayers and citizens who have already paid their taxes and now ask for a second pay in a voluntary tax. I don't think that needs to be done. There are a couple of things in here where it says construction cost depleted the county fund, I don't think that's correct either, I don't think funds are depleted. We still have a good amount to go toward this. For donations being tax deductible, I don't know if they are or not, so this is a county-owned office building that will be used for offices in the county. It mentions up here identifying grants, I don't know if any grants have been identified or applied, to kind of give the idea of the payoff. I would be in agreement with publishing this as a human interest story to end that, but I am not in agreement with sending it out to every person in the county. And I don't, it's, the historical society's mentioned in here several times, and I don't think they are in agreement to do any of that.
Any other comments?
I know that we want to, I know that we want to move along with this project. I think we're all in agreement with that, the things we've said in previous meetings, most recently, as well as the way our votes have gone of moving forward. So whatever we, whatever we decide tonight, I hope that we'll keep in mind that we did want to move forward, so that we don't get followed down in. But I was, I was really thinking that somewhere along the line, there was going to be a campaign to assist with a document like this, whether it come from this board, or whether it come from some committee or something. That's what I had hoped, that there would be some form of campaign, and rather than just, you know, sending a letter out once, twice, or three times, and to hear Commissioner Felton, there might be a few things that we wouldn't want to print if they weren't, if they weren't solid on our knowledge of it. So I'd like to see some of those things that Commissioner Felton mentioned addressed. I'm not aware, Commissioner Jordan, some comments he made there, but I'm sure he's making them with good knowledge. So I just want to put that out there as conversation about how we might go about this.
Kind of, what constitutes tax, about donation for this project?
I do not know, I was basing the letter on what was dictated to me last year that I can find out.
I know it's a 501(c)(3) organization. Is the county considered 501(c)(3)? I don't, I'm not sure.
I would, I would.
Well, I think, when this was originally drafted, I think Finance Director Van Pitten looked into that. It was just not put in there arbitrarily. There was some research, I can't say what justification it is right now, but the county's considered 501(c)(3), but certainly, that should be on record, probably allowed to be there.
Commissioner Free, any comments?
I agree, I listen to Commissioner Jordan, that certainly, and as I recall, we did discuss the 501(c)(3), and I don't remember seeing anything writing from this particular particularly, but if I'm not mistaken, we all, at least through that entity. I too feel like the letter going out, maybe this time, until we do some, I know we studied and studied and studied, and we need to move on, but do we have the answers as pertaining to the grants that are available and the funds that are available in a line item or in a budget?
As you know, when the economy a few years ago went, you know, so we had, it stopped, a lot of grant opportunities also stopped, you know, it's just the name of, it's just the name of the game. I too do not feel like it's appropriate to send a letter in a bill to taxpayers. I think they would laugh at it, and I do think, as you're well aware, the short society has worked on the East Wing extensively, and really, it's in very good shape. And that, and we will continue, we will continue to provide the restoration for that as we go forward, and that your room, we have funds to help with that as well. And certainly, the windows in the building are in desperate shape, that we need to be thinking about doing something immediately, especially in the East Wing, as well as in the courtroom. And there, certainly, the East Wing, we would be responsible for, as we can see if we do keep the Gatlin Room and the Patriots Room. I think personally, that if we get started on the courthouse, we have funds available I think personally, that if we get started on the courthouse, we have funds available.
It's $123,372.
And if you remember the bids that we got, that doesn't cover quite, but it goes a long ways to do it. If we can get started and see how far that takes us, and then see, we might make, as we go down the road and see, as I wondered if you mentioned, I think we got started and things were being processed, some people might step forward.
See some activity.
See some activity.
Madam Chair, the way the sentence read is as additional engineering and construction costs have depleted county funds allocated for the project. In other words, what the sentence is saying is that those funds that were allocated have already been encumbered. They may not have been spent, but the cost, contract cost for what we identified is going to take all of it.
Well, we might have to do it in stages. Remember, we're in the 2016, 2017 budget. We are getting ready to do a new budget for 2017, 2018, that we maybe could have a appropriation at that point in time as well.
I just think it's a good, I mean, just for the sake of discussion.
And that's what we are discussing.
I think it's a good opportunity for some of the citizens of the county who would like to be a part of restoring the old courthouse, to revise some funds. There's maybe some citizens who says, yeah, hey, I'll jump on this. And there's going to be some that say, hey, don't tell me about it. Put it in file thirteen. You know, that's the expectation. But certainly, those out there who have some sentiment, and the wherewithal to make those kinds of contributions, certainly, we want them to have an opportunity. And, you know, that's going to save some of the other citizens who may not be able or want to have further tax dollars allocated for this project, to not have to do that. So, you know, I understand the sentiment, but it's not a bill. It's only making the citizens aware of what's happening and provide an opportunity for those who want to be a part, to be a part, and those who don't, hey, put it in file thirteen. We might spend a few dollars on some paper to put it in, to have it stuffed, but that's the only thing it's going to cost us. But I mean, that's for the sake of discussion.
Our historic courthouse has been sitting there, likely due to an annual project for three years, as far as the exterior. Interior's been a lot of work. Exterior has been looking there, it's an eyesore. People coming by, possibly don't want to contribute when they see nothing happening. We do have $123,000 and change ready to spend. It's going to cost a little more than that. We know that the low estimate was $152,000, so we got another $20,000 on that, or $30,000 to go from there. But I am going to make the motion, I make the motion that we move forward and contact Clearscapes or Andrus Corporation, whichever would be the proper one to contact, and start this process, tell them to get to work. We know what needs to be done, we already agreed on all of that. We need to just go ahead and do something. And I make the motion that we go ahead and do something. Go ahead and make the commitment to have the west wing finished, so that it looks complete from the outside. And then maybe someone would come by and say, well, I would like to come by with that.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to proceed with the restoration or redoing of the west wing of the historical courthouse. It's been seconded, discussion.
Can you please clarify which of the two options, just for the record?
The one using the new brick.
Madam Chair, I just, I think it's not a good idea to work on half a house. You know, you're going to, we're going to restore it, we got half the money. And that's assuming that everybody's going to agree to finish it. But you're basically obligating the board to say, hey, we're going to get it started, but guess what? Don't have enough money, but you're going to have to vote for it, because I'm going to be in a bad way.
This is what we have in 2016, 17, and the budget will be for 2017, 18 shortly. And I would hope we would be able to appropriate enough to complete it.
Well, we did have enough appropriated. Just to give you a little background, we had, what, the $250,000?
But we didn't really have $250,000.
Well, we had donations. We had it earmarked. The reason this letter is out here is because we had earmarked 200, well, I don't know exactly the figure, but we had several hundred thousand dollars allocated from donations. He said, well, hey, we haven't got any donations. How can we project a revenue that we don't even have a method to bring it in? This is a letter, basically, justifying that revenue stream.
It was $250,000.
I believe it was $250,000. So now, we're going to take the letter away. We're going to, we got half enough money to get started. And we don't have a identified revenue stream, other than the fact that the commissioners are going to be obligated now to say, well, we're going to, in 2017, or whenever we get to that point, to tax taxpayers another $100,000 or $200,000 to move forward. You know, this is just to mean, it's going to be a laugh at or what, something, you know, that's... At least we've gone to the citizens for voluntary, to do a voluntary contribution before we off trail here. So, you know, I'm not in favor of starting with $123,000, when we have not fully identified the other revenue stream, how we're going to finish it. This letter was supposed to be part of that, to identify a revenue stream that could bring itself that way.
Well, the $250,000 came in, and this was done before Mr. Riker was here, it was done before, I don't think it was done when Mr. Chapel was here, wasn't it?
It was, I think it was started then.
And that was, I mean, the county put in some money.
Correct.
And I believe that the county put in originally, we have $123,000 left.
Correct.
And we did not have $250,000 put in by the county.
Now, I don't know what the original amount is. I'd have to go back and pull, because I don't have the file with me. But I believe there was at least $250,000 originally put in by the county, if not more, based on the work that's been done inside of the building and the painting that has taken place so far. But there's $123,000 that is left from county funds.
We also had the revenue from donations that were taken out.
But there was never any donations that had been received.
It was a budgeting entry.
It was a budgeting with no money.
With no money, yeah, because donations, donations come or they don't come. So what took place was a budgetary line item was made, and you had to come up with an amount, and the amount was $250,000.
And we took out that mine recently, December or November, that we took that out. So that's why it looks like the money has been spent, but there's no money there. We just removed.
The line item.
The line item. So it's like, there was never money there later, and we took it out, so it would be more realistic.
And the letter was to provide that revenue process.
But, you know, I think, you know, it is a county building, it has, we want to have county offices. And the Historical Society has provided enough, right much money, working to improve the east wing, and continues, will continue to spend money with the east wing and with the bad U rooms. That relieves the county of that obligation. So that has to be taken into consideration. It's not going to cost as much for the county because of what the Historical Society has done.
And there is more Southside, in the Historical Society, if you add to this, you know, future day. I would do it.
I was going to ask, since I might be the newest one here, maybe the youngest, but I'd... But I was going to ask you, will you ever form a committee to look into things Commissioner Jordan's mentioned as far as funds being donated? And should we institute to have a think about that along with Mr. Felton's motion?
Well...
And have a committee dedicated to finding that?
We have an old courthouse committee for probably three years, four years.
Not many, it couldn't last that long. And that was the purpose, the assigned task that that committee was to big eye what to use courthouse for, how it would be used.
I think that would be a good thing here then, too. After we get construction started, people can see something happening. Then I think for this letter to be published in the newspaper and show what it is, along with a full plan of showing how the building is to be used. I think then you might see some contributions come in.
Well, let me go back to the letter I made, and Madam Chair, I realize we have a motion that's seconded.
Yeah, I do.
I'll finish my discussion here. If this letter was drafted the way all five of us liked it, if it goes out just freestanding on its own, I'm afraid we're going to miss an opportunity. Because you don't want to send this letter out, if it was just like the five of us wanted, you don't want to send it out two to three times. An article in the Gates, I think the proper marketing plan would be to get the Gates County index, to do a story. There's a couple of magazines out there, local magazines, maybe something in there, coupled with some activity, seeing some activity out there, done properly, maybe involving the Historical Society, to where they can do something at one of their meetings and invite people, a larger section of the community, to that. I think the letter, once you've got their attention, then the letter drafted the right way comes out, in that audible effect. And Madam Chair, I'll call the...
Okay, the motion before us is to proceed with the restoration or reconstruction.
Well, there's, if I may, there's actually two. Did you, in your motion, you said continue with the new brick? Was that restoration? Because you quoted the $152,000, or was it to reconstruct the west wing?
How much is all they're going to cost?
The restoration estimates were between $152,000 and $237. To reconstruct was the $22,31 and $292.
We only got $123. We don't have enough.
And that's why I'm asking Commissioner Felton.
For the restoration as presented in this first option.
Okay.
So you're, is the person who signed it a reach of air?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. To get back to your point, that it's not enough to complete, that's true, but it's enough to get started, and some things haven't been done in influence.
Madam Chair, I'm not clear on how we move forward on this. It just doesn't, it's not clear. And I cannot certainly vote on it, in my view.
But the building is to just, the building is going to deteriorate, the west wing, if we don't hurry up and do something.
If I may, if you can take a vote, or you can table it, or if there could be a motion for me to contact Clearscapes, to see if they would be willing to do it, part A, part B, what they would accomplish this fiscal year, and then what they would accomplish in the next fiscal year. Because they did tell us that they would have to locate bricks, no matter which option we went with, because they were looking at the yardage bricks as they were found, and they were going to have to find those, and that might take some time. And since it is the middle of March, that might take two weeks, it could take three months.
I realize construction is not going to happen quickly, but I don't want to withdraw my motion. I would like to go ahead and get something started. It's been too long, right?
Okay, Commissioner.
I too want to get something started, but I really want to know when I'm getting started. Maybe you all will care, you know what you want, really, but I really don't, I'm not sure what we're getting out of this, other than the fact that we're going to go to Clearscapes and say, hey, you all get started. And, you know, they're going to do some work. If you do half of it, it's going to be worse than it was. But they're not doing anything, basically, and you're going to have to have reconstruction.
Would we be able to agree to table it in order for us to get together and see, and then have those figures for this year with Commissioner Felton's motion, and then move it into the fiscal year of 2017, if you'd like?
The 2018 budget.
2018.
But aren't Clearscapes moving forward? I mean, they're not standing still. I mean, they're moving forward as we speak, aren't they?
No, they're waiting us on the side of which route you want to go.
But isn't it kind of magic, it's not legal for us to basically sign the contract as work without identifying funds?
Right, you have to go ahead and move the money if you want to go ahead and do it. And that's why my recommendation, after all this discussion, is to see, let me go back and discuss with them if they can break it out into phase one.
They do the exterior and then do the interior. If we could get the exterior done with the windows and, I mean, the windows on the west wing and the exterior of that, and then the interior work could be part two.
Yeah, I would go along with that, because it's not legal to move forward projects and film.
Well, we clearly, as a body, we've clearly committed to finishing the west wing. Because we wouldn't fix the outside and not fix the inside, because we've all made a commitment to do that. But I understand your issue with the funds. If the fund's not there, you can't vote to do that, I understand. I'm wondering, County Manager, with the comments that you made regarding Clearscapes, how Mr. Felton feels about his motion. I know that he doesn't want to withdraw it, and I don't want him to. Commissioner Felton, have you got any opinion on your motion as, after hearing the County Manager?
I would revise it enough to say to go ahead and complete the exterior of the building to get it so that it appears to be complete. It is an eyesore like it is, and it's going to fall down, and it's not going to take much longer for it to do it. So I will be willing to revise the motion that we complete. We contact Andrus to go ahead and start construction, start purchasing the bricks, the new bricks, to complete the exterior of the structure.
With restoration of that? With the available funds, within the budget, will we avail the funds? Wouldn't we do that?
But if we table it and vote on it next month, I mean, in April, do you think you could have the numbers, I mean, have them?
I will call him at eight o'clock in the morning and tell him I have to have them.
I would go ahead and say a commitment made in my mind, I mean, I don't know what the thing is. Make the commitment to do it.
Okay, he amended the motion, I like the person who settled.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me be clear. Does he amend it, state that within the code card available, allocated funds?
Well, really, Mr. Jordan, we don't know exactly how much money we've got. We've got the $123,000 and a change. We've got money that is from the Historical Society, and I'm not going to give a number on that, but there is some that is coming from that way. We have individuals that have... We have, uh, individuals that have, uh, not obligated themselves or promised themselves to give money to this project once it gets started. So I'm not going to limit it to a hundred twenty-three thousand dollars.
Well, that is illegal for them.
Would you, would you do your motion that, that you would limit the county funds to what is currently in the budget, or for phase one?
Okay.
I mean, that, cause that would, you know.
I really, I feel like that the hundred twenty-three thousand is gonna cover the outside of, of exterior without any problem, uh, so.
Yeah, and it's not the, just outside more. Okay, is, so, let's be clear.
Motion is to complete the exterior of the wall within the, within the county available funds, plus any other funds that may come in, but we'll limit it to the county.
But, but if we don't go by those, we're just saying that it's within the hundred twenty-three thousand, that that's what we'll spend.
And, and, and pending Clearscapes' contact and agreement that they can do that.
Well, they're, they're in those states.
Well.
Within those states.
What we're asking, we don't know if they can do that within a hundred twenty-three thousand until you talk to them, is that right?
But I'd say we can. Say the whole thing.
I think that she's gonna find out the stages part.
I was gonna find out the stages part.
Okay. We, and we do the first stage?
Well, no, I was trying to figure out from their calculations, and I can't figure out everything that probably needs to be calculated.
County Manager, you need to keep us legal now.
I think, I don't think she's gonna send us to jail. I mean, doing that causes us to get in jail.
No, that's why I said I'm trying to calculate, but I can't, based on what, some of the information that's in there, I can't determine, because he gave the range of hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred thirty-seven, and it appears seventy-five thousand, or possible seventy-five thousand dollars of that calculation is regulatory costs and the interior of it, which would mean putting the floors back, the walls, everything like that. So if you're at the low end, then of course you're below the hundred twenty-three thousand.
Seven, seven thousand. Well, well, why, why don't you just have the County Manager move forward in getting this information from Clearscape, and then we can follow through it at the next meeting.
So we, we've done this over and over, we spent fifty thousand dollars, we've done nothing so far, and if we keep putting it off, it's gonna be, the next meeting is gonna be put off for another reason. My motion is that we contact Andrews Corporation or Clearscape or both, or wherever it needs to be.
I think Clearscape tends to be one, to do the design.
To move ahead with the restoration of the exterior part of the historic courthouse using new bricks, and to stay with, if this can be done, within the money available with county funds.
Well, that, if we can't do it, then stop anyway. Okay?
Okay, so it was Felton's motion, do you agree second?
And with the available funds as well, yes, okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, I think we probably need a hand vote on this, uh, so that we make sure that we fit this correctly.
As long as we got the motion, can you read that back to the?
Contact Clearscapes and Andrews to complete the exterior work on historic courthouse within the available county funds of a hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Okay. You may not need to put in it, but I've used a new brick, and it's the restoration.
Okay, is everybody clear?
All right.
Okay. All of those favorite, raise their right hand. Okay, it's five of us. So if you'll call at a clock more. Okay, moving along. But you, I would hope you realize that we have civility on our board, we have sometimes different opinions, but we don't shout, yell, scream, and whatever. So you, I think we deserve a K-plus, like we can do our business. Okay, uh, new business. Okay, first item on the, uh, is the Board of Elections invoices.
Before you, you have some information pertaining to invoice that was received from the Board of Elections Director. The invoice was dated November the twenty-first of two thousand sixteen. You also have a copy of the Gates County procurement policy, as well as General Statute one fifty-nine dash twenty-eight, budgetary accounting for appropriations. This invoice, which was turned in on March the third for payment in the amount of four thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixteen cents to the V R Systems Incorporated, which was an e-coldbook software that was used for the election, has been denied for payment by the county, based upon the department not following the procurement policy. The purchase order was turned in, however, there were some questions, and the tax finance officer made several attempts to contact Ms. Gordon, who did not respond in a timely manner. The, um, contract for the software was never received or signed by the County Manager as outlined in the fiscal year seventeen budget ordinance. According to the Gates County procurement policy, which is the attachment A that you have received, it talks about the procurement policy, and how items should be completed, and how contracts should be signed. The general statute then goes on to say, also talks about incurring obligations using county money and pre-orded requirements. It then goes on to say that the governing board may approve bills, invoices, or claims that has been disapproved by the finance officer. It's been on to say the governing board may not approve a claim for which no appropriation appears in the budget ordinance, and there was an appropriation for this software. The governing board shall approve payment by a formal resolution stating the board's reasons for allowing the bill, invoice, or other claim, and the resolution shall be entered into the minutes with the names of those voting in affirmative. And the Chair of the Board is the person who's responsible for signing for the payment of this invoice.
Yes. Okay, we're gonna check a five-minute break, and we'll be right back.
Preparations for the new bill.
Okay. Okay, getting back to the topic, I think, uh, and, um, we're discussing the Board of Elections invoices. You've heard the, uh, we had the page trail here in front of us, and heard the County Manager, as she has, um, uh, pipelined the events that have occurred.
Madam Chairman, I've looked over the information, and recognizing that, um, some of the county policies were not followed as identified in the memo from County Manager. However, we have to keep in mind that, uh, it's, we've got two situations here. If we don't obtain the equipment, let's say if you do not get the equipment, then we're gonna have a state office. And so, you know, it's not like something that there's a, a choice of whether or not to purchase this equipment or not, something has to be done, but that doesn't take away from the fact that we still need to follow procedures. I've done a little investigation, and I've found out that I pulled the, the expenditure budget for the election office, and currently, um, they have in department supplies, they appropriated eleven thousand one hundred dollars, and currently, they show an unencumbered balance of four thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars fifty-five cents, which is approximately five hundred and something dollars shy. But it was relayed to me that the, um, finance office said that there are previous purchase orders that were overestimated and overstated, and that there's actually five thousand four hundred twenty-three dollars in that line item, so that's very large enough to, to take care of, of what's there. And, uh, you know, as I look at the general statute, general statute puts us in a legal position, where it says that we cannot, um, approve something unless we have the funds appropriated, and we do have the funds there. So, just before I would make a motion, I would say to the Board that since we have the funds, that we could go ahead and approve this, but we also would like to have the Board of Elections to, uh, give us a plan on how we will prevent this from happening in the future. In other words, have them draw up a, a, a plan on how to, how to prevent it from the future. And, but at this time, we, we could go ahead and, and, uh, approve, uh, the, uh, pick up the, of the, of the purchase order, based on the fact that we do have the appropriated funds. And, uh, and like I said, County Manager, I'm, I'm basing that on information that's been related to me, so it still will have to be scantuated that, that is actually the case.
Right, and she has been asked, I believe repeatedly, to contact finance office to clear up the outstanding purchase orders.
Well, that's what I, what I've been, and certainly I would be willing to put that into a motion. But like I said, I, I think the, the Board of Elections give us something that should say, you know, how to prevent this from happening in the future.
Well, there's several, yes, I mean, some several problems, holding on money for, I forgot when, one check is held for months before being deposited, you know, that is a violation of our policy as well.
And they could address that into the collective.
Okay, so, and that causes, it's not the first time we've had problems with the Board of Elections, uh, and, uh, you know, they are not exactly under control, but, but they do have to follow the county policies irregardless. We, all like parking heads, you know, the procurement, um, you know, you don't keep money, you deposit it each day, uh, you get invoices, you send them over immediately. So those things, if it was a one-time thing, it would be a little bit different, but it has been a somewhat of a pattern, and that is problematic to me. Working in the school system, that was drilled in our head, you collect money, you receive it, and you get it in, and you get it in before you let that school ice. And it's just not good to one department not doing what they're supposed to be doing. But, um, you know, that's kind of my thoughts. I do think we need to have a serious discussion with the Department, with the Board of Elections, or allowed to the Board of Elections, that procedures have to be followed.
Now, I agree that Commissioner Jordan, in, in the fact that Board of Elections, certainly by General Statute, uh, we, we are gonna fund them, and obviously we do, and I do know, all of us know, that there's been an ongoing situation from job description, if I'm not mistaken, right up to, to the purchase orders and what have you. Don't know how the County Manager has been able to, to take that from time to time. I can understand that that would be difficult, however, uh, I don't know the underlying problems that exist there with their own records, and, and maybe that's an opportunity for us to look at some more things, too, as County Manager has mentioned, but, uh, I certainly know that we need to, to fund them. And, uh, I don't know if it's a good idea, if I'm not mistaken, have they not sat down before us as a group, uh, recently? So, uh, I, I do recall that.
Yeah, uh, they did.
So CRS doesn't kick in all the time.
I don't have, I don't plan a corrective action, basically, they'll, they'll address it, and, you know, uh, whether it's, you know, we, they have a discussion with the Election, Election Direction Director, and, and that, uh, you know, these, based on retraining or whatever, these items won't happen again. I think that is, that is a normal process of how to accomplish, uh, in, in this type of management scheme, so, um, you know, this is not something that's unusual, and we don't, they are separate entities, and if we really wanna get in trouble, you know, we should just stop funding them, and I'll tell you what, you'll have the state F S D I, everybody else down here on us, and I, I don't, I don't want to have to go to, uh...
I don't think anybody has suggested not funding Mr. Jordan.
Yeah.
I, I think what we do is that this problem is a recurring problem, and, um, I think, I think I would speak for some of the people on the board, you know, we shouldn't be having this discussion, uh, because we've had problems before.
Well, they have a board, and now the board, we're passing the board to.
And we want a corrective action plan.
Correct.
Okay.
That's reasonable.
Okay, does anyone else want to comment before we make a motion?
Well, we, um, we also have to look down and take it in, and, and decide, you know, we want to know what corrective action the other board's gonna take. But we also wanna make, I think we wanna make sure, um, that the other board is fully aware of this document that's in front of us, and they, and they may not all be aware of it.
It was sent to the Chair of the Board, Mr. Hankins.
And they may not have met since it was sent to them, so they may not be aware, but when we look down at the end of the table here, at the County Manager.
County Board member here, Sears.
And the finance officer here, we also need to know, but they need to know, what our expectations are of them if it occurs again.
And Mr. Sears is here, he's on board.
Well, I wouldn't ask him to speak for the board, but, uh, I will ask Mr. Sears, if I may, Madam Chairman. Mr. Sears, have, have you, has your group met since March the seventh? Okay. You haven't received anything from the Chair? Have they?
And does your board change in June?
Thank you, sir. If, if the current loss is the reason.
It could have been the same, though, with.
It could, right.
Thank you, Mr. Sears.
Madam Chairman, I completely agree that the, the funds have to be paid, we don't have a choice on that, and I would like to see, as Mr. Jordan said, to have a, um, a procedure for correction, correcting this problem, and these problems have been carried over and over and over the last, last year or two. And we're, I, I would like to see a deadline set on that request for a proposal of correction, corrective action, cause we, I believe I'm correct, in that we are still waiting for a number of understanding for the last two years has not come through yet, and I would like to, as Jordan has been agreement, to put a time limit on the point to expect this. We don't want to wait until, until next month, which is still the limit for.
I think I would have it by next meeting, probably by our, uh, Mayor, Lady. Yeah, I see today.
Okay, so, um, I don't think a motion really has technically been made.
Madam Chairman, I'll approve the motion that we approved payment of the purchase orders, uh, based on the fact that we have appropriated funds in the, in the line item.
And we need a, a request from the.
It has to be in the form of a formal resolution.
Well, okay, my motion is that, that we could pay out a resolution to be, uh, signed by the Board, uh, that the person. by the board, that the purchase order be paid, info based on appropriated funds being in the line item, I forget what that line item is called.
Departmental supplies.
Departmental supplies. And the resolution would specify that a corrective action plan to prevent further consequences to be presented to the Commissioners within...
No later than?
No later than...
The main meeting is May third, the first main meeting.
That might be a little close.
The second main meeting is May fifteenth.
Let's do about fifteen, give it a little more time.
Okay, 'cause that's about two months.
Yeah.
Okay, the motion before us is to prepare a resolution to approve paying purchase order for departmental supplies and to request a correct, a corrective action plan to be completed by the Board of Elections to, so that these problems will not be reoccurring, and the deadline for the report back is no later than May fifteenth, twenty seventeen. Is that correct?
Right, the corrective plan is to be in...
Far.
Future of course.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Yes, I have a second, I'd like to ask Madam Chairman.
Any additional discussions? Okay, is everyone clear on what we're voting on? Okay, all those who favor this resolution, I think we need to raise a hand to them. Raise your right hand. All those opposed, vote as five zero. To have a resolution to pay for the purchase order of departmental supplies and have the correction action plan back to us by May fifteenth, twenty seventeen.
All the Commissioners have to sign that resolution. I believe that's what the General Statute did, or doesn't it?
I don't think you have to sign, I'm gonna get back up to it. I know the resolution will be in the minutes together with the names of the voting to be affirmative.
Okay.
And then she just has to sign.
Okay, okay, we have some budget amendments. Mrs. Hall, do you want to go, please?
I don't have. Okay, she, well, I don't think she has them, I'll do them, 'cause I understand what they were from, we worked on these together, and I, the first one is from Department of Social Services, and it has to increase the legal services fees for a foster child. And as you can see, the reason it requires your approval is because money is being moved from salaries and benefits to cover the expenses for legal fees.
Okay, but is the money there just being allocated? Okay, all those is amendment, budget revision of Amendment number thirty. Do I have a motion?
So move, Madam Chairman, for Budget Revision Number Thirty, moving from professional, let's say moving from professional services legal.
No, it's moving to professional, to legal services.
Second.
The motions been made, property second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those opposed, say aye. All those opposed. I approve Amendment Budget Revision Number Thirty-One.
This is to move money, a hundred and three thousand six hundred dollars from the Enterprise Fund balance to buildings and improvements. This is to cover the cost of several projects that have taken, or have to be scheduled for this coming month. There are two of the wells that have started to break, so they need to be fixed, and also to complete the payment for the repairs that will take place from the hurricane.
Okay, I notice on the Enterprise Fund vote is one hundred and three thousand six hundred, but then...
It is supposed to be six hundred and one at the top.
Okay. I was wondering where that dollar went. Okay, I want to entertain a motion.
So move, second.
Motion to be made, property second, once again, is transfer or reallocation of funds from the Royal Department from Enterprise Fund balance to building and improvements. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Okay, that is approved. Budget Amendment Number Thirty-Two.
This is to reallocate funds within the Inspector's Department from several different lines to cover the shortfall for the part-time salaries.
Madam Chairman, move that we approve Budget Revision Number Thirty-Two.
Second motion, Madam Chairman.
But a motion has been made and seconded to approve the reallocation of funds, couple of part-time services in the Inspector Department. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those opposed, say aye. All those opposed. Okay, thank you. And of course, this time of year, we get a lot of budget amendments because people are making adjustments to, before the end of the year, so that's expected. Okay, now we have to do something that is the fun part of that job, is to wish people, on March the ninth, we sent her a letter congratulating her on her one hundred and third birthday, and she'll be celebrating tomorrow, no, not tomorrow, next Tuesday.
Twenty-seventh.
What, next Saturday?
The Saturday.
No. It's Monday.
It's March the twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh is on Monday.
Okay, March twenty-seventh, okay, and that is certainly a milestone. Certainly have a motion to send a letter?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to send the letter to this March the ninth in celebration of one hundred and third birthday.
Second motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made and seconded, and we send a letter, and that all of us will sign, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Okay, and believe it or not, we have another one, a lady who is a hundred and three years old, Leslie Ritt, and she also will be celebrating on March twenty-seventh. I think they're having a joint party at Da'ne's. No, it's not Da'ne's, no.
Accordion.
Accordion?
Accordion.
Okay, excuse me, gotta keep up with times. Okay, do I have a motion?
So move, Madam Chairman, to draft a letter, have this letter sent to Mrs. Leslie Ritt as pertaining to her one hundred and third birthday, be celebrated on twenty-seven March two thousand seventeen.
I second.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Hopefully, we can get this on to the day show, they always honor people who are a hundred years old. That would be nice for them to mention that, don't they still do that? I think they do.
Madam Chairman, I'm on that now, are we going to make this a form plan for each, any of our citizens that reach a hundred plus to send them?
If they let us know.
We've been doing it all week.
Spread the word.
If you see somebody, your next door neighbor running around in the yard cutting grass, they're a hundred and five years old.
Okay, it is a wonderful milestone, and, you know, living in Gates County, we have a lot of people who do reach that hundred birthday, must be because of the type of people we are and the place we live, so, let's all try to reach these milestones.
Thank everybody for talking.
Okay. The next one is the school request.
Yes, I, excuse me, before you, I have a request from Dr. Williams regarding repairs of the second system at Buckland Elementary School. He states estimated costs of thirty-nine thousand have been projected for this repair, and the repairs are part of the school's ten-year capital outlay. He asks if they be allowed to move forward with the repairs, and once work is completed, be reimbursed from the county for the cost involved of the compensation of the paid invoices. We also have a copy of the proposed contract that they said that they will accept, and it is in the amount of thirty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars. You also have before you that we received late today a list of the capital outlay expenses to date, as well as the projected projects that they would like to complete throughout the rest of the fiscal year.
But these have been funded with account for in next year's budget, correct?
Right, we have appropriated them two hundred thousand dollars, so the six items that you see on the present information provided by Mr. Blanchard would be completed with the remaining seventy-nine thousand dollars that they have.
It's another action needed there. I thought it was interesting, he asked for thirty-nine in the contract, so thirty-one thousand.
Wasn't the other eight thousand?
Yes, I thought it was, I wasn't...
Well, is that thirty-one, as you just mentioned, seventy-nine still left, is that thirty-one covered in that seventy-nine? This is one of the, we have already appropriated to them. Has he asked for additional money?
The discussion that we had when I was down there was that they would like to take part of this seventy-nine thousand dollars they had left, pay for this project, and then the county give them the amount back, so they can finish the projects that they provided to you on this email we received today. So in essence, they're requesting an additional thirty, if you go by what the contract is, thirty-one thousand and some odd dollars.
One hundred and twenty-four dollars.
And they will request the funds after the project has been paid for with their funds.
Well, these, these projects are not contracted, are they?
No, these projects that are on the budget information, they are not contracted, they're grand house jobs.
Well, you know, we're only several months away from a new budget, and they're gonna be presenting us with a proposed budget, you know, any backfill rate could include in the, the new budget proposal, probably. Yeah, replacement of lighting in the gym, replacement of lighting in the elementary school, roof repair patching at Central Middle School, purchase of a wastewater pump for Gates County High School. Get all this done in, in three months is, seems like an unrealistic to me. But the purchase of the backhoe, parts for the tear on the backhoe, school, okay. I can't feel it, you know, it just needs to come through to this, the new budget.
You know, I think we're saying the same thing, I feel like we've already appropriated this one.
Sorry, if you look at it in the new budget request. Yeah, this is it. I know these items are, that they have listed, but they don't, we don't have the status on them, we don't have the contract, but just to say that, you know, we're gonna backfill on the thirty-nine thousand, I'm not even sure that we'll even finish this project within the next sixty days.
Mentioned that this being a greater priority?
This, if you remember, about two years ago, they came before us and requested about thirty-two thousand dollars, and it was the same situation. The Commissioners responded, complete the project, and then at the end of the fiscal year, if you needed extra money to finish paying for a project, we would pay for that expense, and there was never a response received back. So at a follow-up meeting within the past year, I asked the status of this project, and they said it still had never been fixed.
The same wastewater.
Yes.
Same, same, 'cause I went out and reviewed that, the system and the guns, to look at that and see what...
Certainly, you know, I think that basically they're saying, will you replace the money that we're gonna spend, and I, I think our response is certainly we'll consider replacing it in the new fiscal year.
And does that start zero in July?
Yes.
And they want this, their projection is that it is to be finished by thirty June, that they're for the new fiscal year.
Well, when I, when I look at this, when I look at this, that's the reason I ask, had anybody heard anything about this being almost an emergency situation, 'cause it is wastewater. But if it was, then they've got some funds here, when you get certain, it looks like...
Looks like they have seventy-nine thousand dollars left.
Yeah, it looks like it could certainly be, if it was an emergency, would be a priority over some of the things we see here.
And my discussion with them is certainly they're very fiscally responsible in the fact that they're looking at someone from Gates County to do the work, and that he is responsible for doing it at a almost half the price of what they've got from other engineers, and doing the same work. Certainly agree that they picked the right person and doing the right thing, however, the dates are a little confusing to me.
Did the contract give a date, sorry?
Now, they say they want money for the bribe.
There is no data.
Price quoted is from for ninety days, is all I see, when I read it.
And also, I did send you, and I believe I forwarded all of you with email regarding the Division of, Department of Environmental Quality, CBVG Infrastructure Funding that is available. I do know Dr. Williams has received a letter. He came to me the other day and said, do I need to get this meeting? I said, yes, sir, I strongly encourage you to attend this meeting, this meetings, and I've also heard back from Ray Felton, because I made him aware, and he said that they would be looking into what DEQ had to offer them, because three of the schools for Gates County were listed on the Department of Health and Human Services list of schools that needed wastewater assistance of some sort, and Buckland was at the top of the list for Gates County.
And there are funds available, right?
There's funds available, the meetings will begin in April, I've not received a letter, but according to what Dr. Williams showed me quickly the other day, I'm supposed to begin in copy of the, the same letter he received. There will be meetings and public hearings in April, and then the funding is in September. And I learned about it through Mike McAllister, he had seen, he received the information.
In fact, you talked about Dr. Williams' data.
Right.
Well, in addition, I'd like to just mention that my review of Buckland School, Buckland Schools I sent have done a great job of making, you know, fair that I said.
Okay, what is pleasure board?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we let the school board know that you move forward the repairs based on current funding, they have a lot of, for project repairs, and that the Commissioners will consider replacing this in the new fiscal year, provided the school board has submitted application for grant funds. And those had basically outcome of pending, applied for the grant funds that are available. Did you make, get that mixed, a little? That was what I'm saying. You're not wanting to move forward with repairs based on the current funds that they have, and the law that they apply for the available grant. And... And based on the outcome of that grant, we will consider replacing the funds in the new fiscal year, July one.
And Commissioner Jordan, would you also want to add their proposal that they've included?
Right, based on the proposed cost that is submitted.
Okay, so...
Based on the requirement they have to put it out there. It was under...
It's under fifty thousand.
And I believe based on what I was told, they get at least one other quote.
So your motion is authorize to move forward with the funds they have currently, and to apply for the DEQ grant?
Based on the outcome.
And based on the outcome?
We will consider re-impersonation of the funds in the new fiscal year.
Okay, is everyone clear about this motion? Do I hear a second?
Second motion, Madam Chairman.
Any further discussion? Okay, and when we are talking about the funds, are we talking about thirty-nine thousand or thirty-one thousand?
I think you at one time had said based on the invoice.
End invoice, that's right. We need to that. Okay, so everyone's clear. We all want to move forward with the funds they have currently funded using applying for the DEQ grant, and based on that outcome, we will consider funding for next year. Okay, all of those in favor, I think the need since it's spending money to raise a hand. All of those in favor, raise your right hand. All of those opposed. Okay, let's approve that. Half, zero vote.
And if I may, just as a follow-up, Mr. Harold will be retiring on April the first from Gates County Public Schools, and Dr. Williams notified me of that information. He had also just found out that the person who... And Mr. Harold was the wastewater operator. The person who is the backup wastewater operator is going out for shoulder surgery in Mar-, at the end of March, will be out throughout the month of May, I mean April. Dr. Williams contacted me to see if Mr. Timmy Hedgebent would be available to be their backup, to the backup, so to speak, for wastewater for the school system for the month of April. And I spoke with Mr. Hedgebent, and he said he was available to do it through March, I mean through May and February, on a temporary basis, until the other person returns to work.
Something they talked about, just for information purposes, is that maybe the school handled the wastewater too good, and then, and I think maybe they've told Mr. Hedgebent about this.
And that would be a discussion for some other time. That is not what has ever been discussed with me or Mr. Hedgebent.
Very well, some discussion.
Okay, moving along. We have a report of condemnation.
Yes, there were three properties that Mr. Buckron has and Edgar Mitchell have spoken to me about. They do not need to be condemned. All three houses have already either been burned down or partially torn down, and been left in a state of disrepair, so to speak, for over a year. As you can see in the letter that he sent, he has tried making contact. He did say that several he's tried to contact by phone. A few of them he has actually talked to, and they keep saying, oh, we're going to clean it up. Letters have been returned from certified. The property that's on NC thirty-two, he does know that that has asbestos in it, and neighbors have reported finding sheens in their yards. And that is one of the main concerns. The Kellogg Court property caught fire, and he does not know if there's any asbestos in the house, from what we understand. Part of the house was built in the eighteen hundreds, the other was an addition, so they're possibly in the forties, fifties, and sixties. So there is the possibility of asbestos. And the last property is on Willington Road, and that house was torn down by the zoning. And at this time, an asbestos inspection has been done. There is no asbestos, but it has not been cleaned up. Based on their recommendations, I'm requesting that we advertise for cleanup of the properties. There would have to be money allocated, so I took liberty of preparing Budget Amendment Number Thirty-three. The funding would be moved from the salaries and benefits, as well as travel, bonds and dues, and office equipment, maintenance from the planning budget into the condemned buildings line item, because that is in the planning department's budget. It is an estimated twelve thousand dollars. Mr. Ron and Mr. Mitchell said it could be, Lance, it could be more, but they felt like this twelve thousand dollars would at least get us started. One of the properties is also in the foreclosure space, and will be auctioned in May. And that would be one of the property, it's not county foreclosure, it's a mortgage company. And that is one of the properties that we feel that it was cleaned up first, then we could attach a lien to that property, and whoever bought that property would then be required to pay that lien.
That was my question. That could be done all through the property.
Yes, it will be done. They're all, just as the last time, they were given the option to pay. Last time, one of the people did pay, the other person did not, so there's now a lien on that piece of property. So if these people do not pay, then the lien would be placed on their property.
And this last one was one of the rezones?
Yes, sir.
So they could put it in place, and they decided not to put it in place.
The lien on these properties are interested in, like, being approved, just like taxes?
I can't remember. I've got to...
You don't know how to properly tax, uh, pay all those properties?
I do not know. And I did not check with Ms. Lane. Well, she probably would not be aware.
I mean, my question would, would pay taxes?
Well, one of, that one's one foreclosure. That would be no prob-, I mean, that's just a add-on to the revised. Kind of like the high stair on thirty-two, the old Pierce place. And that was that.
Yeah, we need to have a motion that, I think one here on the side of the school.
Madam Chairman, can you entertain a motion?
I certainly will.
Make a motion that we appropriate the twelve thousand dollars for the cleanup of these three properties.
And now a second motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion's been made, and I'm really excited that we approved the budget revision to allocate funds to clear up the properties that are on Kellogg Court, Highway Thirty-two, and Willington Road.
Is part of that motion that we will attach the property?
That is, that's part of the ordinance.
That has to be done. I mean, we don't have to, we have to clear up the construction.
That would be, it is part of the ordinance, and just so you know, it does not mention interest, but it does, it of course does include any filing fees, any attorney fees, anything else that is reasonable cost related to removal of the building and cleaning up the property.
Madam Chair, may I comment on that? We're talking about the same...
Yeah, I would look pretty informal. Yes, Mrs. Sides. Come to the podium.
The piece of property that I think that you're talking about on Willington, or someone is in the process of cleaning that up? I don't know when the last time you inspected it, did you buy?
He indicated that it was within the past two weeks.
Like, somebody went out there a couple of weeks ago and started cleaning it up. The house that the fire department burned down? Yeah. I know the family, I know the people, and they are in the process of cleaning it up. I don't know what phase that has to be now, but it did have somebody cleaning it up.
Well, we can certainly check on that, before...
I would suggest that you check back before you put that house in that category of which?
If you mind my motion, depending...
Well, if they start, they got to also finish. A lot of people start something and finish it. But yes, will you mind by your motion?
Madam Chairman, with the, pertaining to the additional information that we have, I will withdraw my motion. And I'll follow up soon.
Okay. Are you prepared to make that?
The reason I would withdraw my motion, I'm wondering if we need to, I know we're voting to appropriate funds, but do we need to do, build individually? That's the reason I would do my motion.
Why would we have to do them in good...
For simple reason, what we shared with, I mean, if we're gonna...
But I think we can send the inspection people out there and, or make contact, people say we're going to start, if you don't, you know...
If I hear you correctly, you're saying if y'all will take that, if y'all clean it up, will that, is the family be due for that? Is that what I'm saying? That's why I suggested that...
And we want to check.
Yeah, check one more time.
I think the key, like, the key is, it says that to this day, there has been no progress. What we're hearing is there is progress, and the motion would be if you have to move forward on those properties where there is no progress. And if there's progress, then we all might be moving forward like this.
Do you still want, do you want a time?
Well, we need to appropriate the money. Need to appropriate the money. The, what is it, number thirty-two? I want to do the actual funds. So, I want to do the actual property stuff.
Okay, we can do that.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that we appropriate funds for Amendment Revision Number Thirty-three, twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, so the motion's been made, probably second, that we allocate funds under Budget Revision Thirty-three to reallocate funds to property cleanup of twelve thousand dollars. Any discussion? Hearing none. All of those in favor say aye. All opposed. So we have approved the budget amendment.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we have a building inspector... I'd like to make a motion that we have our building inspector pay a visit to a property on Willington Road, the parcel number oh four zero zero four oh eight, and report back to county manager if there's any activity there.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made, and second, to request the building inspector to revisit parcel zero four zero zero four oh eight on Willington Road to see if there has been any progress in cleanup. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All of those in favor say aye.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with our condemnation ordinance on parcel number oh six oh one two one one, and parcel number oh one zero zero six eight six.
Okay. Motion's been made, and probably second, that we move forward for a property cleanup on parcel number zero six zero one two one one, parcel number zero one zero zero six eight six. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All of those in favor say aye. All of those opposed. Okay. Is there any other news to come for us? Thank you. So, okay, comments, citizens' comments. Any?
Madam Chairman, I have a comment I'd like to make.
Yes, sir.
I'm chairman of the Democratic Party, which means I've been a part of the Board of Elections for some years now. And I'm well aware of the...
Oh, you need to, because so you'll be on the video, so people can see you. It might increase our ratings.
Y'all, y'all sitting at the church party?
We do.
This will increase our ratings.
We can get you leave some fingerprints over there, we'll dust it.
I'm well aware, I'm well aware of the, let me back up a bit. The Board of Elections only occasionally invites the chair of both parties to sit in on their public party meeting sometimes, to make us a part of what they're doing. And that's good for what they do. But I'm well aware of the friction of the rift that's been going on between the county manager's office and the Board of Elections. It's been going on long enough, and I'm a little tired of it. So I'm not here representing the Democratic Party. I'm here as Anthony Solomon, a citizen of Gates County, that I would be, if there's something I can do to be a part of, when it's coming together of the county office and the Board of Elections, I'm more than willing to volunteer to be a part of it, if that's something that's hard or even hard to work. But it has to be stopped, and it's just been going on too long. So if I can help some way, like I said, as a citizen, I was party chair, because if I use the title of party chair, the other chairman, the other member, might want to come in and help. I'm not for that. So if there's anything I can do to bridge this gap between this department and the department, the Board of Elections, please just let me volunteer my time.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comment?
He makes the table.
Okay, Mr. Riddick.
Just one comment. About with somebody. Ms. Holly was talking about the medication, lock boxes, and we have the one here in Sheriff's Department. But I also have individual medication lock boxes that can be used for personal use in the homes. We have some of the citizens here from Holly Grove Senior Club that have received the boxes. The county received eighty-five through the Project Virus Fund, so I have about fifteen left in the office. I'd be glad to bring some over. We can put some at the Sheriff's Department. We can put some in county manager's office, just to get rid of them, because I've been trying to get rid of them since last year, and it's kind of hard. When you go to events and people don't want to take them. But it's good for families where there's children that have pain medicine. It's a good way to keep it locked up and safe with stores, so that children won't get to it. It's good for seniors in their homes, because you have people coming in and out. You have nurse care, you have home health care. So it's good to keep the medication locked up, especially pain medication. So, contact me.
Yeah, I was just saying, that's a wonderful idea.
So you can contact me at the health department. If there's something that I need to order more, I can try to use it as some of my materials or marketing funds. If we see that there's a need that more citizens in the county will need one, just let me know, so that I can get requisitions and things like that by March thirty-first.
Thank you so much. And that's wonderful. Try to keep it either as children or people that are coming visiting at home.
Mr. Riddick, I would suggest you coordinate with our sheriff, that he could probably help you make proper places, or find the proper places to replace them.
And that's a question, because I know that we did have an incident in the county where a young child overdosed from his parents' medication. And I know, as a citizen, I don't want to be privy to who that individual was, but it would be nice that maybe someone from the Sheriff's Department or EMS could take the medication boxes out with them and be able to distribute it to the families when they go out to these overdose cases or whatever, you know, take place, decisions. So I'm open for suggestions and your help. Get rid of these fifteen, so I can order more. It looks like a cash box, or somebody breaking the house, that leaves money in there. It's not money, it's cash.
Well, it might be more valuable than money. Okay, well, thank you. Couple things, thank you... Couple of things, um, thank you for coming tonight and staying the whole time. And we have done it pretty preschool tonight, only two and a half hours. But we do appreciate each of you coming. I will just say that, um, Thursday night, Historical Society is meeting at the new library and Reed Thomas will be here and we'll be talking, uh, about the Ford Heist. And it's at seven o'clock, so we invite y'all to come out. You know, it is a, um, sprint, I, the day's first day of spring. It might not feel like spring, but I hope that this is coming soon. I'm tired of cold weather and it's snowing on Sunday, uh, was not the best. But anyway, hopefully we'll have spring weather and we may have less sickness in the community, a lot of sickness in the schools. And so hopefully everybody can get healthy and we can enjoy great spring weather. Thank you once again for coming.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. It is good to see and thank you for your participation.
Same here, uh, thank everyone for being here. And I think I again take the award for most in my business. But, uh, I do have, uh, one comment to the board as well and, uh, as citizens. We do need to take a look at our Sundberg School contract. It is getting close to ten years. I'm gonna, county manager, you need to pull up those documents and have them available for the board so that we can look over them. You probably need to get the owner and, just to see where they are in their plan of restoration so that we'll know how to respond at the end of the ten year. Because it's, I think this is almost the ninth year of.
No, sir, this was, they just received their fifth tax refund.
Just about to give you? I've been walking around. But that deed, well, that deed was, I thought it was about my first setting year.
No, sir, we, we looked into that first, uh, for another question that came up.
Since I've been on the board. Remember the meeting was in the old Mr. Sherrill, you know.
But it seemed like it's been close to the.
It is, it's not, I, like I said, there was another question that came up, so we had to.
But this is the end of that tax.
This was the last year of their tax.
Tax refund. I can just say, um, you know, they have to take it full back.
Well, it's still there.
And Henry, I guess I'll have to thank Judith for coming over tonight. She stood my side with, and you blocked her life to your side.
No, but I'm still here, she's still undercover.
I still got one, but.
I took a handful of that. Oh, I am the little boy, I have three.
As everyone else said, we do appreciate your participation and good to see, uh, everybody here tonight. And it's always nice to see people that are interested in what's going on in your county government.
I was gonna count Warren, but he was like. I think everybody in Gates area is sending an absentee vote. But, uh, I do, uh, I, I would be amiss if I didn't say that, uh, the opportunities that, that we all share, uh, as colleagues here, uh, and the challenges faced that we face by working together is, uh, is really prevented by us knowing one another and being able to work with one another. So we do come to resolution and it is minimized and not maximized by ourselves. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to continue to take closer. Okay, I'll, they're taking a motion to the jury.
Don't move. Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.